Welcome everyone to our public forum on lower village zoning. And I will, we could certainly introduce the planning board and planning staff. And so my name is Lori Clark. I'm the current Chair of the Planning Board, and I'll hand it off to other members to introduce themselves. Nancy?
Nancy Arsno, Planning Board Member.
Karen?
Karen Kelleher, Planning Board Member.
John?
John Colono Romano, Planning Board Member.
Meg?
Margaret Coschello, Planning Board Member.
All right, Debbie?
Debbie Woods, Associate Member, Non-Voting.
And I'm not sure if Mark Jones is here. Is he? Oh, Mark?
Mark Jones, Voting Associate Member.
All right, and then I'm gonna hand it off to Valerie, who's going to be doing a lot of the talking tonight.
Yes, hi, I'm Valerie Ortiz, I'm the Planning Director. I'll just share my screen, see if this works. All right.
There it is.
All right, so thank you all for coming out tonight. We're here just to provide a quick overview of the lower village zoning amendments that the Planning Board intends to bring forward at town meeting this year. So it's our hope that we can get your feedback on these changes and continue to strengthen our draft bylaw. There'll be more opportunities for feedback in the coming months and weeks leading up to town meeting. So we'll start off with the history of lower village planning efforts, just going back over the last decade. The Planning Board has reviewed business conditions and opportunities. We've worked to understand each parcel's boundaries and learn about residents' visual preferences of visual, of building facades, layouts, and the need for constructing streetscape improvements. So lower village zoning has long been in the works with numerous opportunities for resident input over the years. Village center zoning of the type that we're recommending, which will be defined a little more later on, has been a clear recommendation from consultants and town subcommittees and boards over the years. And most recently, a group of consultants has reviewed this draft to ensure that it meets the Planning Board's goals of a pedestrian-oriented and vibrant village district. We'll hear more from those consultants in March and April as they continue their review and provide us with visuals to better showcase the zoning changes. So here's a quick snapshot of the district. We have 80 different commercial units and a high vacancy rate. Right now, in the main shopping plaza, we have a nearly 28% vacancy rate. So lower village is our primary business district, and it's also a residential neighborhood. There are homes along with Samuel Prescott Drive and many residents at Meeting House at Stowe, for example. So zoning and infrastructure restrictions, as well as the pandemic, have created a climate of consistent vacancies over the years as property owners struggle to hold their tenants. So the Planning Board's vision for the district is of what we call traditional village design. So village center zoning includes five different elements. So walkability within the district, a strong mix of uses, the inclusion of housing opportunities, and accessibility both to the district and within, and a distinct sense of place. So this is the vision statement that was created by the Lower Village Revitalization Subcommittee and adopted by the Planning Board, understanding that it will take many years for lower village to develop into this vision. The lower village business district zoning bylaws that we're proposing are intended to make the realization of this vision possible over the years. So why adopt new zoning? Lower Village right now is an auto-dominated district. So the way it's currently laid out, it's intended to be accessed by cars, both to the district and within the district. Much of the space in lower village is taken up by cars. We have oversized parking lots, for example. We have persistent vacancies, an unsatisfactory mix of businesses, and the district lacks a clear sense of place. And I'll describe some of these problems the bylaw seeks to address in the following slides. It's an auto-dominated district. The current zoning includes rather high and inflexible parking requirements, which lead to large swaths of parking, like you see in this image here. The current setback requirements create buildings such as this that are pushed far back from the street, so they're accessed by cars rather than by pedestrians through a sidewalk. The current zoning does not provide the Planning Board the authority to approve more flexible site plans to give some creativity to site planning. So this gives us buildings that are oriented around parking lots. You have persistent vacancies. So this isn't all to do with zoning, we understand that. Vacancies are also due to a lack of public water and sewer infrastructure and the business climate, the market. However, the current zoning isn't flexible, so there are not a lot of options for redevelopment or reconfiguration of the sites, which would create a more vibrant business district. So we've heard from property owners and commercial property owners that aesthetics and the physical appearance of the district are major drawbacks for folks to locate in Stowe, and those vacancies further damage the draw and the appeal of the districts. So we know that residents are unhappy with the current business districts, or business mix in the district. Folks want more restaurants to go to, more opportunities for gathering. Lower Village doesn't have a clear anchor tenant right now. Typically, dining options are anchors in communities such as Stowe. So a recommendation that has come through our past planning processes is to allow mixed-use developments to bring more residents into the neighborhood and to provide property owners with another source of income, which would positively impact the business climate.
Sorry, Bill Maxwell, can you go on mute, please? Or Valerie, do you have the option? There we go.
All right, so, lack of a sense of place. So currently, there's no clear connection to the recreational opportunities that are quite nearby, and the Lower Common offers the only space right now for public gathering in the district. The architecture in the district and the orientation in the buildings and parking lots also provides pretty low aesthetic appeal. So it's not necessarily a place that you'd want to go gather with your family. So the Planning Board has six clear goals for the new proposed zoning. Again, these are long-term goals that will take the district many years to develop into. We'll need to wait for turnovers, for redevelopment, modification, infill developments in order to be proposed. So nothing on the ground will change immediately unless property owners file for special permits for the Planning Board to consider that redevelopment. So we want to be in front of investment, so including those market fluctuations and the infrastructure improvements. We want to have the zoning in place prior to all of that coming down the road. So our goals include balancing bicycle, vehicle, and pedestrian infrastructure, incorporating design principles, creating an attractive gateway to Stowe, encouraging small-scale mixed-use development, managing stormwater, and managing site access. So we'll go into each of these in a little bit more detail to show how these goals are reflected in the bylaw. So the first goal is to balance vehicle, bike, and pedestrian infrastructure. The site plans that would be required through the proposed zoning would need to show what we call functional open space, which would allow for pedestrian plazas and courtyards, such as the one pictured here. There's a lot of emphasis on sidewalks, layout of parking areas, pedestrian access to buildings, and interlot connections for all users. And the image here on the bottom shows how a site plan can be changed to provide decentralized parking areas that allow safer and more visually appealing connections between buildings. Parking will not be allowed to be located in front of buildings, but instead encouraged either behind or to the side of buildings. There's an added emphasis on the ability to walk between properties in a safe, accessible, and convenient manner. So Goal Two is encouraging context-sensitive architecture and site planning. So design connects people to place. We know that buildings and streetscapes create the setting for social interaction, the vibrancy of the district that we're going for. So the new zoning that's proposed trades the strict dimensional standards that our current bylaw has in favor of giving the Planning Board greater oversight over design. So design of both buildings and the site planning design. So to back up a minute here. So here are two examples of what the current bylaw provides in terms of dimensional standards. So the one on the left shows a building with a 50-foot setback from the front and the rear, with the max floor area in green if it's a one-story building, and the green and red hashed show a potential two-story building. So it's not a very creative site design, but then if you add in all of our parking requirements, it gets a little more boring, a little bit more boxy. So on the right, you're seeing the parking in the front, again, a rectangular building, and then the rear setback. There's not much room for other items to be included here, especially if you have to add in buffers or well and septic systems as well. So here are some rough sketches of what we are looking for and what the Planning Board would be able to permit. So the example on the top is having a facade of a building that has changes kind of to break up the building massing itself that makes it a little more visually appealing, a little more what we call pedestrian-oriented. And then also how a building is sighted and oriented. So on the bottom, you're seeing a building close to a sidewalk oriented toward the street and also to side streets. So here are current and proposed dimensional standards. I won't linger on this too long, but this table does compare the current zoning to what is being proposed. And again, we won't be able to get to our vision without changing the existing standards. So again, rather than this, we're introducing design standards. The third goal is to create an attractive gateway to Stowe. All developments will need to set aside 5% of the area for open space, for gathering spaces, for farmers' markets, for outdoor dining, even pop-up markets or special events with food trucks in them, for example. So this is all for the purpose of activating the neighborhood, including the businesses and the public spaces. The fourth goal is to encourage small-scale mixed-use development. The bylaw that we're proposing allows small-scale mixed use. So this is, example is, an office on the first floor or retail on the first floor with residences on the second floor. And those residences would be limited to two-bedroom units with a maximum density of six units per acre. And we know that more residents in the business district will help create the feeling of a village center and will support local businesses. We've had consultants reiterate this to us over the years. And with more people living in the neighborhood, walking to stores, that will only further help achieve the vision and increase the likelihood of this vision being realized. So we know that for redevelopment, also to be economically feasible, a housing component needs to be allowed as well. So the housing types that would be provided speak to the Planning Board's goals of increasing the diversity of housing types in Stowe and providing more affordable housing options. So both younger and older demographics would be attracted to this type of housing. We're introducing a few new allowed uses, those food trucks and pop-up markets, artisan production, microbreweries, and also a focus on retail centers rather than on individual retail uses. And again, the mixed-use development that I mentioned before. Only a few more prohibited uses, so tourist homes, lodging homes, motor vehicle service stations, and the storage of vehicles and equipment. So Goal Five is to utilize low-impact development methods and green infrastructure to manage stormwater. Low-impact development is strongly encouraged in the bylaw and allowed to be included within the functional open spaces that I mentioned before. So this includes alternative surfacing materials, building and site design elements, and also landscaping features such as rain gardens. Lastly, Goal Six is to encourage interior lot connections and interior streetscapes. So to better manage traffic from Great Road, we'll encourage developers to create these interior lot connections and interior streetscapes. This will allow for more creative site design and also to avoid unnecessary vehicle trips to and from Great Road. So we'll have more shared parking between businesses. And we're also including an emphasis on complete streets improvements. So those that allow for safer and more accessible access for all modes of travel, it's all emphasized in the bylaw. So that concludes the main portion of our presentation. For questions or feedback, I think that we would like you to use the raise hand feature and for us to call on you. And we'll try to, we'll ask that you be as concise as possible with your question. Hopefully, we can limit these to just a minute at a time, and we'll try to provide the best answer we can.
All right, Lee?
Sorry, I'm trying to get it to turn on.
Sure.
With these proposals of putting parking in the rear and on the sides, it makes it prettier from the road, but it means that all the abutters will now be facing parking lots instead of having some kind of, you know, most of them don't have anything behind the buildings other than maybe employee entrances or a few loading zones. Is there, has anybody considered the safety aspect of the fact that there would be so many more pedestrians and vehicles closer to the residents that abut these businesses?
So the bylaw does include landscaping requirements and screening requirements to existing residences. So the hope there, you know, we understand the issue of having headlights coming into homes, so we would try to address that through landscaping and screening.
But the way it's written, it's only if they're districts. The people, the properties that are behind Linear, my property, the properties behind Stowe House of Pete's, all the south side of Great Road, those are, well, my property and the houses behind Linear are zoned business, so there is no buffer. So how do you enforce that when they are part of the district?
So we would likely address that through the special permit process, adding in conditions to ensure that the residents in the district are accounted for. I do understand that we have ongoing enforcement issues that do need to be addressed as well.
The one thing I do want to add about the Linear property is it doesn't necessarily mean that there would be parking behind the existing buildings. As you can imagine, on the Linear property, it could mean that they actually build more retail in the front, and the parking ends up being in the middle. So I definitely understand Lee's concerns, but wanted to just point out that for different properties, it could suggest different things. Laura Reiner?
I had a question about, I guess, how you would implement this. It's a set of aspirations. When, say, the man who owns Beef and Ale decides to, if he ever decides to develop it, that's when, if this was in place, he would have to present a design in keeping with this bylaw?
Exactly, yes. So this vision will take years to achieve because it does depend on current business and property owners coming forward with modifications that they want to make to their site. I'll note that it's interesting that you mentioned the Beef and Ale property because the Planning Board has approved a new site plan, a new building for that property. So they will need to just abide by the current special permit that they were given recently. But yes, for all future modifications, it would need to come through the Planning Board.
And could I just follow up? Could you comment on the new development at Maynard Crossing? My concern, some of the slides you show, artist renderings, remind me a little bit of that. And I'm not a big fan of that look or of that development, those fake villages.
Yes, I think that the Board would likely agree with you there. So part of how this bylaw is different than the permit that granted Maynard Crossing is that we are only allowing residential properties within other, within a, sorry, a building that would allow office and retail. So it's true mixed use rather than having all of these buildings toward the road and the homes in the back. I'll also say that our design standards are certainly different than those at Maynard Crossing. We are not looking for those boxy buildings, but really looking for more of the New England vernacular architectural style. So a lot more emphasis, again, on pedestrian connectivity, again, over in Maynard Crossing. I feel like that is absolutely auto-oriented, and it's difficult to walk between buildings over there, and that is also not what we are going for.
Great, thank you very much.
Ellen?
Hi, I have two items. And one is about the, when you have the fronts with, you know, some are farther back and some are farther forward, it creates a lot of corners, interior corners, where the leaves blow in and the sand, and they become dirty and they stay dirty, rather than having the wind brush all across the front and blow everything away, wherever away is. And also, it creates dark corners where if you've got a restaurant in there, nobody knows it because it's in this dark corner with lots of leaves and stuff built up in front of it. So even though it's kind of nice, cute, interesting-looking, the end result can be that it ends up being grubby. The other thing is about putting the parking in the back. And then, what, the doors to the stores are then in the back? So that, or do people have to walk all the way around? Like, you know, if I park in the middle of the triangle in Maynard, I have to walk around, not that I mind, but I have to walk around to the front to get into the store, except for Babaco's. And so it's just changing, you know, you move from here to over there, or else people have to walk around. And I, you know, I'm no fan of huge parking lots, but I think moving the parking to the back isn't really a solution. Maybe smaller parking lots at the front, or, I don't know, something different. Yeah, that's it. Thanks.
Yes, I don't know if Valerie is frozen or not, but a couple of comments I'll make to that, Ellen, are, certainly, the parking can be on the side as well. And I think the idea is that the retail businesses would have openings on both sides. So not, I don't know if you're familiar with the, the shopping plaza in Sudbury that does have parking in the back, but you actually can enter the building from both sides. So that's the intent. The intent isn't to only have it in the front and then have to walk around. The intent is to actually make it people coming and going from both sides so that there's actually more, more different ways of movement. All right. I guess we have to figure out what happened to Valerie because she was controlling.
Yeah, she's hosting the meeting, and we also have three people waiting to get in.
Oh, boy.
I guess she dropped off because we lost the share, too.
Yeah, yeah. Why don't we, why don't we try taking another question? I guess I see Mo, I know you had your hand up. Can you actually, okay, yeah.
Yep, hi. Yeah, I don't know why Zoom decides to go with my nickname. My question kind of somewhat aligns with what Ellen was saying, is the entrance in, because we have to also consider handicap and elderly. They're not going to be able to park a distance and then trying, you know, get to the entrance of whichever building. So I want to ensure that's considered. The other thing is, I'm very happy to hear that John, who owns the Beef and Ale, is moving forward with other plans for that because I know previously, last year, he had said it was taking him two years to get through some permitting, and by the time that developed, the costs were too expensive for him to then go forward with his plans. With this new plan, are we going to address how long it takes for a business to get through that process? Because it's very grueling, I believe.
In fact, he's had his permit for quite some time. It may be years.
So maybe he's finally addressing what it was that he went for.
I can't, I can't speak to what the holdup was. I know that initially, it had to do with pricing going through the roof because of the pandemic. It's getting really hard to get contractors. I don't know what's happened since then, so I'm not going to try to answer that. But we can certainly go back and look at the permitting process, but it was, it was not.
No, I've just heard from other people, it's very arduous to get through and get something approved in town.
In fact, if you have all of the information that we need to review, we can certainly put out, anticipate the timeline that it typically takes. Okay.
Lori, Valerie said her computer shut up on her. She's working on trying to get that on.
Okay, all right.
The last question I had was, is our vision to look somewhat like how downtown Concord is? Because that's what I'm seeing in this presentation. And we've got the vision of how we want to go, but how, I mean, yes, it will take several years to get there, but I mean, it almost sounds like the buildings are going to have to be leveled to get to that vision.
It certainly will take redevelopment, and I guess the comment and the other Planning Board members feel free to weigh in, but I would say we certainly aren't going for exactly like Concord because we don't have the on-street part. Like, 117 is not going to have on-street parking. And so I would say, a little different than that. We still want plazas, but I think the point would be that the design of the buildings would be different. The design of the parking would be different. It would encourage pedestrian and bike traffic as well as spaces for community activities to happen. And we are working on, you know, this is our first forum of a series, and we are actually working with a consultant to create some visuals to give people a better sense of what that is. All right, let's go with Charlie.
Hi, can you hear me? I think I've unmuted everything.
Yes, sounds good.
My initial reaction is this is really outstanding. My wife and I just completed the Planning Board survey and something we both agreed on, having lived in this town for over 30 years, is that something needed to be done to redevelop Lower Village. So while I'm sure loss has to be decided going forward, this is really impressive. My question is, I believe during part of this, I saw something about multifamily housing units. And what I wondered is, is the idea or is the plan for those to help meet the needs of the MBTA community a lot?
That's a very interesting question, and it's something that we haven't necessarily visited specifically yet, but I know it was, it came up as an initial thought that we should discuss how it does or doesn't help meet that. So we haven't purposely discussed it yet, but I know it already kind of popped up into you. So we ha- we haven't purposely just uh discussed it yet, but I know it it already kind of popped up into several people's minds. Welcome back, Valerie.
Sorry about that, my computer, you know. Oh, boy. Um Marsha?
Uh so all of, everything that you're talking about is geared for the existing area that is now the shopping center. Is that correct?
So it's it's the um all of the business district parcels that are within the Lower Village neighborhood. So I can um.
Okay, I I I'm just wondering, I thoroughly think, believe that multifamily housing um along with the businesses of mixed use is a wonderful idea. However, um where, anybody have any idea where the public water supply would go?
Right, exactly. And so again, that's that's the intent here is is to get the zoning in place before water comes so that uh we have more control over the look and feel of the district as as it gets redeveloped. Um so, you know, looking at this as as two separate items to to tackle.
Well, yeah, it's two separate items, but they are quite entwined.
Oh, yes.
Yes. Uh Lee?
Uh I don't know if it was in this um but or if it was just the papers that I was reading. With the mixed housing, was am I remembering correctly that it's not going to be ground floor? It's only second floor? If there was housing? If that's correct, then how would that attract a mixed use of of um people using them? Because it's not universal design. It reduces the accessibility. It's all the housing is on the second floor.
Um so so I I did misspeak. There is a provision, I believe, in the bylaw to allow a certain percentage on the on the first floor. Um uh so I guess that's, I I am sorry that I I forgot about that for a moment. Um but also, you know, there could be, I'm not a designer, so there there could be other ways of ensuring accessibility in units. This puts a lot of the onus on on the developer to come up with with the plan.
What is what is the thought process behind not allowing it on the first floor in the first place?
Um I think because as our primary business district, there are um many businesses that that wish to be located on that first floor. So I think it's um in order to gear this mostly toward the commercial property owners um to to allow them to to succeed in the district.
And I guess one thing I'll add to that is um, you know, the desire is not to have separate residential buildings and um commercial retail on the same lot. It's really to have it mixed. We want the primary, this is the business district, so we do want sort of the primary to really represent itself as retail. Um so that that's the idea, although um to Valerie's point, even though our initial discussions were about the second floor, we did actually add provisions to allow a certain percentage on the first. Uh Dorothy?
I had um concerns, which I brought up in prior meetings regarding the so many changes being made at this time before it's sure about the water and explained these were being done so that you would have more control over how things are developed once the water comes. And further thought, I was wondering if it's premature to do the change to the lot size to have no maximum at this point? And could you just not to change the buildings then? Because it's not just water that's needed. It's the septic. It's it's so if you have people at this point buying plus piece plots, it seems as if it's going to be more of the what I've heard since I've been here since nineteen ninety-eight. I can't develop because I have no water. It seems now it could be, I can't develop. I have no water or I can't develop. I have water, but my plot's too small for septic and there's no major sewer infrastructure. The another comment I have is that with I not in agreement with changing buffers um specifically just in this one area of town and district. Um and it seems to me that if parking is going behind the buildings, um there is need to at least maintain the current buffers that's there. And it should be fence and vegetation. I live not next door to, I live two houses away from a current lot that is being used um in various banners for business um and has taken away the buffer that should be there. And as someone that lives two houses away with some wood lot in between me that another property owner has, I am bothered by what goes on over there with lights um in noise. So I can't imagine what it would be like for people that live right next to there with the decreased buffer going down to thirty feet as proposed. But um I think the main thing, though, that affects the majority of the town would be what about the septic? How can you be putting plots to have no maximum, no minimum? They can be as small as they want when we have no septic infrastructure at this point. Especially when everybody and also that area of the town is on one of the largest aquifers that we have in Stowe. So it's something that we want to take care of carefully. That affects people not just there. It affects them all the way down South Acton Road. That aquifer travels there. So I think it's it's something to really consider and I thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you. Let me let me add that uh when we were going through a lot of this, we did look at the whole idea of of essentially more flexibility and and, you know, we didn't lightly try to reduce a lot of these minimums. But we felt that we could get a more flex by providing some flexibility, we might get more creative solutions. But given all that, none of this can happen unless the proposals go through the full special permit process, which means there'll be proposals, there'll be public hearings. Uh and of course, they all need to meet all of the other regulations that have to happen, including water and septic. So
I am, I am.
Of course, these minimums are are lower. It doesn't mean that people could build some building on a on a piece of property that's not viable.
I'm I'm not so concerned with like what building is going on there, but has um the building inspector and has the ZBA been asked for their input? Because part of the permitting process is if someone's not happy, they can go, you know, pass in like petition to have something changed. So I'm wondering what they feel about these. I'm not saying I'm against all of these decisions or all these changes. But it does highly concern me that the lot sizes would be changed that way at this point. It um because I see people pushing to get decreased, you know, areas for their septic and sometimes it passes. So you're this, you know, all these businesses and it's restaurants, that's a lot of waste. And even if it's small ones, I mean, the small properties actually may be owned by people that don't have so much of the funds to put in, you know, some type of a waste system that Linier has.
To answer one of your questions, Dorothy, so all town boards and committees as well as town staff have been asked for their input.
Um thank you. That's very helpful. Okay, thank you so much.
All right, any other comments or questions right now? Rich? I think you're on mute if um if you're speaking right now.
You're on mute. There you go.
Am I, am I on?
There we go, yes.
Okay, sorry about that. Uh my name is Rich Presti and I'm the owner of the Old Warkenin Property. So a couple of couple of questions. Uh number one, well, not not a question, it's a comment. I I think the time and effort that's gone into this and thought is tremendous. Uh you pointed out about the high vacancy rate in the whole area, which is true and has been true for a whole long time, and I don't see it really getting better soon unless maybe some of these things are enacted. So on a personal note, I have a a question or a comment. There are three uses under goal number four that are expressly prohibited. They pretty much sound like they're aimed at my property or my current uses, which is storage of vehicles, um not incidental to an allowed use and motor vehicle. Uh uh and services that primarily exist for the purpose of providing services to motor vehicles. Um you know, for the record, I absolutely understand and sympathize with the distaste for having that property with its, not just current uses, its historic uses, because they happen to be about the same. Uh be the gateway to the center. I understand. With that said, to reiterate what someone just said a few minutes ago, um I cannot possibly develop that site without water. Um and I I know you've heard it before. I know you, I know someone's going on the site, my site tomorrow to do some testing behind it. I think that's great. But unless there is water delivered, not to me, but to that whole side, because Linier doesn't want to share the water they have. They have more mo- water than God. But because they don't want to share any of it, you know, the ulterior goal there is to not encourage or allow the other side of the street to be developed. So by not sharing it, it hinders it, obviously. So far, they've been doing a hell of a job. Uh but on our side of the street, not me, starting with a pizza place and coming down, none of us can really develop any of our sites without water. And I know you know it, I just, it's a it's a nail I have to hit again because it's that important. You know, I I looked at some of the uses that were proposed, brew pub, clinics, craft breweries, microbreweries, restaurants. None of them can happen without water, not on my site, any site. So just mention, on a more global thing, the one question I would ask all of you is, do these changes encourage or discourage development? Honestly, I I am a recovering developer. So um you know, I used to do a lot of development in Boston and stuff like that. And that's the one question I would ask you. I know you have a vision of what you want it to look like and parking in the back and et cetera, and some mixed use and some housing. That's great. Do these rules, each one of them, if implemented, do they encourage or discourage development? Because the reality is, and I have the largest site other than Linier's, I have the largest, I will call it, developable site in the center of town. And someone mentioned anchor tenants and things like that. The anchor tenant for that downtown someday will be on my site, whether I'm here or not. It'll be on my site. That's where the most mass can happen. It's where the most allowed square footage, new um can happen. And if that site is developed at some point, it will set the tone for the whole rest of the downtown. So I I don't want it anything special or different for me, but I think it's got to be a recognition of it. If we can't launch my site, the incremental launches of the smaller sites over time is going to be beyond tedious. And it won't take five or ten years. It's it'll take much more than that. So um anyway, water, do these, do these suggested changes encourage development or not? The normal process, the normal process, with or without all these changes. Because I think uh John, you just mentioned it a moment ago, any proposed development will have to go, all proposals will have to go through the entire approval process, community input, zoning, everything. With or without all your changes, they are gonna go, anyone's gonna go through this gauntlet, and I don't mean to phrase it that way, but it is for developers, it's it is a gauntlet. So you can rest assured that whoever is going to try to do something in town is going to come-
Thank you.
Pardon me? I'm sorry?
Uh I think that was just an interruption. I'm sorry. Keep, you can keep going.
Uh I, the natural process of things getting developed like this is that someone is going to come in and notice that a piece of property is underutilized. And they will buy it because they have envisioned a higher and better use. I think Valerie said earlier, or someone said earlier about a lot of these sites, absolutely, they're going to have to be leveled. My site is a prime candidate for that. Everything on that site should be knocked down. All grandfathered uses should be wiped out. And someone comes in with a grand plan where he's going to spend a whole lot of money. He'll fit it into your vision and you will have thousands of dollars of new tax revenue. You'll have twenty, thirty, forty different new services that people can take advantage of in this town. A a pet shop, a bakery, a a shoe store. I don't know. All the things you got to go to framing him for, you'll have in your own town. See if these rules are are encouraging someone to come in here and say, I'll give it a try. That's my only suggestion. That and the water, that-
So a couple, a couple of reactions from me, which is um we certainly acknowledge water is a separate issue. We're 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 trying to get in front of it. And clearly, water has its own path that the town is taking. So we're not trying to address that here. What we're trying to do is get zoning and um to influence redevelopment in front of having that happen. Um and in terms of um the uses, um it certainly wasn't targeting your property. Um it's basically been put together based on input from public forums of what people um are looking for. Um and so I don't, you know, certainly wasn't targeting-
I don't blame you, honestly. I I would like to see my site developed, if not by me, by someone else. Uh and bluntly, I had an unsolicited offer maybe two months ago, someone that wanted to buy it and knock it down and rock and roll with it. And unfortunately, it was uh stifled for some other reason, not the town or other reasons. Uh that is, that's the natural progression of my site. Someone is going to notice it. Who's a bigger developer than I used to be, want to buy it and he's going to want to put up whatever zoning allows. I think zoning allows thirty-five, maybe forty thousand square feet on four and a half acres. And they're going to want to come in there and knock everything down to the level. And they're going to put up brand new stuff in conformance with your rules and with community input and et cetera. That's what's going to happen. It's just you got to figure out whether these new rules are helping or hindering that interest on on new. That's all.
And I and I guess to that point, I will say we are getting feedback not only from residents, but also from business owners um and landowners as well. So hopefully we'll have a good balanced picture. Um Valerie, should we move on to somebody else's?
Yes, absolutely. Sorry. Sorry. Apologize.
Sure. Thank you, Rich. Um Dorothy, did you have any questions for the planning board?
I I just wanted to comment about um Linier. I've seen a lot of um uh postings in here from people that have a really misconception about Linier and its water. One thing about Linier, they are following like the DEP plan to put things into place. They have invested money in it. They also, they own, they purchase the land which they have their water drawn from. They pay taxes on that land. They, when they develop, they looked into that. It is frustrating as a resident, if you're here for quite some time, to hear someone that purchases property knowing the water situation, which was the same-
Okay, uh. I just want to say. I appreciate where you're going, Dorothy, but I definitely would like to keep the conversation to the proposed zoning.
That's fine, I just want to point out, Linear, you know, he's not to be looked at as a villain. That's all, it's the wrong perception.
Ellen?
Thank you. Unmute. Yeah, Rich was mentioning about, now that slide went by too fast for me to read it and really think about it, about, but I think it said that this plan does not allow for any servicing of cars at all, no gas stations, no repair shops, no anything else, is that right?
Yes, in the new Lower Village Business District, so they would be allowed in other parts of the business district. It's also important to know that those in existence would be allowed to continue.
No, I missed something in what you just said, they're allowed in this part but not that part?
Right, so it is confusing that we are creating a new district in town, so the Lower Village Business District will be created, so all of the business district parcels in Lower Village, there will not be those allowed uses there. However, there are other business district parcels in other areas of town that are not included in this update.
So this update is all of Lower Village roughly? So if the car business, it needed to be?
And just so we're clear, they're actually not allowed. There are things that are not allowed, that are not allowed currently. They just happen to be there and be grandfathered, just like Valerie's saying, they would continue to be. So nobody could come in and put a similar business there now, just based on the current uses that are allowed.
Okay, so that defunct gas station can't be?
That gas station can actually never be a gas station, just for other reasons as well, just so you know.
But, okay, I think I get it more or less, good enough, thank you.
Okay.
Lee?
I know that there was a lot of public input before, but how long ago was it since you had the most recent input? I know there's a current one going on. Was that input before Maynard Crossing? And a lot of the development happened in Hudson? Do we think that any of that development in neighboring towns is going to impact the growth process here? Because there's not, you know, if you can only go a couple of miles and actually get all those services, do we think that we can actually attract those businesses to Stowe when we have such a small population in Stowe to support businesses?
That's a great point. So again, we don't have that control over the markets, and that is certainly a concern. Though without the zoning in place, we certainly won't get to this vision. So I understand that with a town with a small population, there's not much of a market reach that we may have, though we're hoping that this does get us in the right direction.
And when we did have the Lower Village Subcommittee, Economic Subcommittee, they actually did do a market study as well. Knowing, just so everyone could understand the fact that we are a small town, there's only so many things that would be interested. So if people are interested in seeing that, we do have that as well.
Of the changes, which ones do you think are going to be the most appealing to businesses and why? What makes those particular changes, other than aesthetics? What do you think would be the draw for businesses to come to this town?
Sure, so it's mostly geared toward developers and towards the commercial property owners, right? So I understand that a business might come in because they're interested in that tenant space that may be created in the future. So I think that a business may say, you know, there's a lot of vibrancy in the district, there's outdoor gathering spaces, there's outdoor dining. Maybe there's another anchor tenant that might drive more people into the district at the same time. So a business may come in because they're seeing other activity in the neighborhood, and they're seeing that there is some forward momentum.
And it's visually inviting.
Exactly, yes, yeah. Mo?
With that statement, if this is passed, and I'm assuming it's a town meeting, how do you plan on promoting this to get those businesses to come with the existing look, which they already don't like?
Right, exactly. So there will certainly have to be outreach around it after the facts. We are currently providing the existing commercial property owners with the bylaw so that they can understand what changes may be coming. I think they are some of the best advocates for the bylaw that we do have, because it will directly impact them. So I probably will lean rather heavily on them. We also have other business folks in our network that we can get the help, that can help us get the word out. For example, we're part of the 495 Metro West Collaborative Partnership. We also have a good working relationship with the Asabet Valley Chamber of Commerce. So those are places that can help market changes as well.
Okay, and I don't know if this is the right forum for it, but I remember at one point there was this discussion about the tax rate, are we still a single rate tax?
Yes, we are.
We are.
So, right. So I mean, that's one other advantage to the businesses, not to the residents. Yeah, I don't think, my personal opinion is, I don't think I should be paying the same rate for my house as the businesses, because they have an income on their business. That's my personal opinion. So I mean, that is one other incentive if that doesn't change, okay.
Thank you. Matt Galloway?
Hi, thanks Valerie. Sorry, I missed the beginning of the presentation, so I just wanted to check. I looked through the documents on the town website, but I was curious if you could tell me quickly, how many residences you guys would be anticipating coming in if the zoning changed in the lower district?
So the new zoning allows for a maximum density of 60 units per acre.
Thanks. Also, was curious if your plan was taken, if it was made in conjunction with the 180-ish units that were going to go into the north course of Stowe Acres? And just thinking about the number of households that we bring into the town, a lot of the appeal is keeping it small, particularly with the school district that we have and the one schoolhouse that we have for the elementary and middle school. How are you guys planning to address that?
Yes, so this bylaw has been crafted over the last few years, when we certainly have been aware of the, of other developments going on in town. It's not anticipated that every lot in Lower Village will take us up on this ability to do mixed use. Some of those lots are very small. But certainly, the size of the town and the growth of town is something the planning board discusses and considers quite frequently.
And I think we are going into this knowing, this bylaw is trying to set the town up for the long term. It counts on redevelopment happening, and that will happen, honestly, over decades. This is not something that is going to happen in the very near future, in terms of suddenly the whole Lower Village redevelops.
Understood, Lori, thank you. If I can ask one more question, I'm just curious if you guys, again, I haven't had an opportunity to read your document on the town website, but is there any plans for cell phone tower variances in the what-like in the lower district? Do you guys have plans for a cell phone tower being placed down there with the new residences and the new?
That has not been discussed at all.
Okay, thank you very much, Lori, appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Meg.
Yeah, I just, there were a couple of questions about research and marketing, if marketing research had been done. And several years ago, on our website, I think, is the document of all that research that was done several years ago. And this was a really, I think that the resulting document is very impressive in its depth. It was a composite group of like store owners and realtors and residents of people that were involved here in Stowe, or living here in Stowe. And they worked together for, I don't know, I think it was a year or so, to create this document. So you guys should, you know, if anybody's interested, just go on our website. Somebody could say what the name of the document is, it's, you know, that they could find it and read it. And you will see all the answers to those questions about research and marketing.
Yes, thank you, Meg, that is on the website, that is called the Business District Assessment and Market Analysis. I believe it was completed in 2019. Thank you. Sorry, go ahead, John.
And I had read that, but that was why I asked the question. That market analysis was done prior to Maynard Crossing being built. And just even if you go into town of Maynard and see how some of the storefronts are closing in Maynard, that pretty much is a direct effect of both COVID and Maynard Crossing competition. So that's my big concern, we're losing businesses left and right because of Maynard Crossing and other reasons as well. So it's just, I know this is supposed to be for the long haul, but I do actually plan to live in my little house that will be zoned business, apparently, because I'm going to be the only property, residential property zone for business on the south side of the street, which makes absolutely no sense to me, so I will have to petition, I guess, for that. But it just doesn't make, some of these things don't make sense to me because they are such a long term. It's taken several years to come up with these things. And while they're being developed, other towns are growing and they're just presenting more competition. So things like losing buffers are a big concern to me, because it's, once they've been reduced, you're never going to be able to get them back. So if you realize that you have, businesses have expanded a certain way, and we do, I don't actually envision people gathering, I go to these other towns that have places that are supposed to be gathered. Sure, they have outdoor dining, but the people come and they eat and they leave, it's still a car traveling kind of thing. I don't really anticipate the Lower Village ever becoming this big meeting place anymore, because that's not the way our communities seem to be developing. So it's just kind of curious to me why some of the decisions have been, you know, whether some of the decisions that have been made have taken into account all of the stuff that's been going on since you started making the decisions. You know, have you gone back and looked at something, okay, we came up with this idea three years ago, but do we want to look at it again? Like, just thinking about what Richard said, it sounds like, you know, he thinks there's still things that aren't going to attract businesses. I don't know what those things are. I don't know what businesses he's envisioning. I know what businesses I don't want to see, especially if they're going to be smack up against my house. So it's just, no, I have read all the documents, I know that the market analysis was done. It's just, it seems to me that the process takes such a long time, that by the time you actually get what your product, your end result, that, all the things around us have changed, COVID being one of the big ones. We've learned, people don't need office business, you know, office space anymore, they can work from home. People aren't dining out quite as much, so those are just things that are, you know, as you've been doing this over the years, whether any of that has actually changed since you started the process? That was my concern about the market stuff.
Thank you. Trish settles.
Kudos to you guys, this is a great effort here, it looks really good. Just a quick question, is there, if this moves forward, would the town consider putting together kind of a companion piece? That would be a set of design guidelines that really, I think there was a little bit of a hint of that in some of the those pieces that you presented, Valerie, you know, that really talks about, you know, like facets of the external, you know, even getting to maybe energy consumption, and maybe how the buffering and the landscaping might look. Is there some kind of sense that, and again, that's kind of skipping over the zoning, that's, you know, still the hard work that's going on. But giving, you know, those that would come in, the new developers, kind of a sense of what it is the town really wants to see when it does finally get developed?
Exactly, yes, that is something that the board has talked about in the past. So having a lot of language in the zoning bylaw itself, that refers to design and talks about what is encouraged with that exact companion piece that you're discussing, coming in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mark Dexter?
Good evening. So I'm just going to go ahead and say that I actually like this idea, the way it's laid out, to be honest, for Lower Village. I know it's a long run, but I do think that having the Lower Village actually be more walk-in accessible is a good idea. I, what Leia was mentioning, that she thinks people come, go and drive. I can tell you, up in Lemonster, we go to the Target up there, and then you go and eat at Chili's, because it's right there. And you don't get in the car and walk, and you hit two things and one stone. And that's the objective here, is to be able to have a little bit of that traffic. You come, you park, you hit three stops, you do your business and go on your way. You have the, if you have the outdoor seating and setup, as the planning board, as, the planning board can know, I deal with someone who has outdoor seating daily, and people do use it. So, but I think this is a good layout, and I very appreciate the work you guys are doing about this, this looks good. Long road ahead, though.
Yes, thank you. Sally?
Hi, thanks, and I'm generally very supportive of these plans. I do have concern about the shrinking buffer, and wonder if when it comes to vote, will we have an opportunity to vote on that in isolation? Is that going to be bundled with all the other ideas, which I'm quite supportive of? But as a butter, I already have concerns. So I just, that's just a worry, that we're actually shrinking the buffer with residential district. Thank you.
Thank you, yes, that's something the planning board can continue to discuss as we go to town meeting. And there's, yes, thank you.
But of course, any specific proposal, all those buffers would be reviewed in the specific instance, right, in the special permit, okay? And that will take, you know, neighbor input, and then, you know, the planning board can decide whether or not the buffers are necessary and appropriate in those cases.
So we'll be advocating on a case-by-case basis? As opposed to rely on a?
Well, again, this was, the goal was to try to provide more flexibility. You know, in a specific case, it may be, you know, a specific number might not be the right number. And this allows everybody to have more flexibility and do the right thing.
Well, look, Sally, I mean, this is our first forum, public forum, of a series of public forums. And so the idea is to have the public input so that we can help finalize and shape what comes. And so I think, you know, either we'll talk about assessing, or talk about how to mitigate concerns that people are expressing.
Thank you.
I guess maybe the other thing I'd say is that certainly my feeling that if we were trying to compete with Maynard Crossing, that would be a losing strategy. We don't have the space to do that in town. So, you know, what we were trying to come up with was something that would be more fitting for Stowe, more unique. So that people would come here with the things that that's appropriate, rather than going to Maynard Crossing. So that people would come here for the things that that's appropriate, rather than going to Maynard Crossing for the things that are appropriate there. And when I think of, you know, as an example, a pretty small example, I think of West Acton, where True West Brewery is and the few shops that are out there. I don't think I've ever driven past that place, other than in the dead of winter, when it wasn't crowded. When there aren't people just sitting in the little tables and milling around. And that's more, in my opinion, what the vision is for, for this kind of setup.
Mark, did you have another question?
Just to follow up on John, that's that place that has Twin Seafood right next door, right?
Yes.
Yeah, that's on one side.
Exactly what I was seeking too. That was what I was thinking too. Yeah. Thank you.
All right. Well, if there isn't anything else, any other questions?
Sorry, I was just gonna say, John, there's no, there's no housing above True West and Twin Seafood, is there? There's no, there's no housing units there. Building the population of that neighborhood.
There is none. And, and remember, nobody is saying that the businesses have to take advantage of the fact that they, that we allow housing. So that's more just an option that they will have.
Lori?
Nancy?
About the housing over there in West Acton, across from that little bookstore, there are those colonial little houses connected, and on the street level is business, and above those are small apartments. And that was all, yeah, and that was all new construction. So that did bring that element in there.
There's that multifamily, really nice unit that they put right on the corner of Willow, and I forget what that street is there. And it's, I don't know, I think it looks like it's probably six or eight units. But it looks kind of colonially, even though it's, it's new, you know, it just has a really nice feel to it. So my point is, is that, you know, concentration of multifamily units doesn't have to all be in just a really big blocky area like they have it in Maynard. You know, it's like, I mean, you know, we could find different places to, like they have in West Acton. It's just an example of that.
So one thing I'll, I'll say is, you know, the bylaw is quite large, the existing bylaw, and, and also proposed changes. And this is our first forum, and it's a lot to take in. And I think the idea of the presentation was to introduce the goals and the challenges and the different types of changes. So we will be having additional forums up, leading up to a public hearing that then leads into town meetings. So hopefully, people got an introduction tonight and can take a look at the various documents and come forward with additional questions or feedback.
Yeah, we really, really appreciate all the comments. They're very good.
Yes. And I love the fact that we have so many people here tonight interested in the topic. And, you know, the idea is to get as much input as we can, leading up to that public hearing, so.
Yes, exactly. Thank you all so much for coming tonight. This is fantastic.